Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 8, 2017. If you could please rise again and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischowiak.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Johnson.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. First item on our agenda this evening is to proclaim Small Business Saturday. Here we go. Small Business Saturday to support local businesses. Whereas the city of Coon Rapids celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States, and whereas small businesses represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years, and small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants, and whereas 91% of all consumers believe that supporting small, independently owned restaurants and bars is important, and 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping, and whereas the city of Coon Rapids supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim November 25, 2017, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Coon Rapids, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year proclaimed this eighth day of November, 2017. And then we have one more proclamation tonight, and I don't see any of the DECA kids here tonight, or the DECA young adults, I guess it would be. And, DECA is an association of marketing students which prepare the students to be academically prepared, community oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders. The mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, and the Coon Rapids High School DECA chapter is asking that November 6 through 10 be declared as DECA Week. I suppose all of that is in here too, I'm just going to read it again, aren't I? All right, all right. Whereas DECA is an association of marketing students which prepare the students to be academically prepared, community oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders, and whereas the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management, and whereas DECA's guiding principles are designed to explain how DECA fulfills their mission, and whereas DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive program that integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, connects to business, and promotes competition, and whereas DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders, and whereas DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork, and now therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim November 6 through 10, 2017, as DECA Week in the city of Coon Rapids proclaimed this eighth day of November, 2017. All right. Next on our agenda is to approve the minutes of October 17, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Did we make that one correction in there where they named our finance director Beer?
We will think that, yes.
Okay, good, all right. Yeah. Finance Director Beer explained a request was made.
(laughter)
All right.
Just checking to make sure you're reading.
That's it, yeah, that was on page three, by the way. Item, the first, item number four on this evening's agenda is the first item on our consent agenda, and that's to approve an off-sale Class A liquor license for Cub Wine and Spirits 12940, Riverdale Drive, Suite 700. This was previously the location of Riverdale Liquors, and so tonight we will be approving a Class A off-sale liquor license for Super Value Incorporated Doing Business as Cub Wine and Spirits 12940, Riverdale Drive, Suite 700, conditioned upon a successful background check for both the applicant and store manager, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and final approval by the Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement Division. The second item on our consent agenda, number five on tonight's agenda, is to approve a master consulting agreement with Hackenson Anderson Associates Incorporated. From time to time, the city retains consultants for professional engineering services to assist with city projects. Typically, the city contracts with firms possessing expertise in specific areas that cannot be provided by city forces or to supplement existing city services. As opposed to relying on continuing service agreements that are prepared by each consulting firm, staff previously initiated a city master consulting agreement, and at this time, we will be, we're looking to approve to add Hackenson Anderson Associates into the city consultant pool in the area of general municipal services. And, so that would be what that approval is. Item six, which is our next item on our consent agenda, is to accept the quarterly financial report. Quarterly financial information as of September 30, 2017 has been completed and is being presented at this time, and assuming the council has no specific questions, no action is necessary other than to acknowledge receipt of this report. Item seven, next item on our consent agenda is to approve Hennepin County Drug Task Force Agreement. The Coon Rapids Police Department has been a member of the Inoka Hennepin Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force since its inception. Current members of the DTF are the police departments of Inoka, Blaine, Champlin, Columbia Heights, Coon Rapids, Fridley, Maple Grove, Ramsey, and the Inoka County Sheriff's Office. This new agreement proposes to add the city of Rogers Police Department. The existing joint powers agreement has been in place since February of 2017, when the city of Ramsey was added as a drug task force member, and the city of Rogers has subsequently proposed being added as a new member of the DTF. Rogers will contribute a detective to the DTF, which will strengthen the vital Hennepin County connection, so we will be approving the 2017 joint powers agreement, adding the city of Rogers to the Inoka Hennepin Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force. Number eight, next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 17-114, authorizing execution of cooperative agreement with Minnesota Department of Public Safety. At the October 3, 2017, city council meeting, council adopted Resolution 17-105, to accept a victim service grant from Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Justice Programs to fund a victim witness advocate position in the city attorney's office. The city attorney's office has since learned that the state requires an additional resolution authorizing the city attorney to execute any agreements for this grant. Staff has prepared their required resolution for council's consideration, so we would be adopting Resolution 17-114 to authorize execution of the grant agreement. Last item on our consent agenda, and number nine on this evening's agenda, is to adopt Resolution 17-116, approving Comcast's request to implement a revised late fee, and basically the late fee will be going from $9.50 to $10. The last time the late fee was adjusted was in 2013 to the current fee of $9.50. Prior to that, the fee had not been adjusted since 2010, so we'd be adopting Resolution 17-116, conditionally approving Comcast's late fee of $10. And that should be the consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Demmer?
Just for context, I did do the math, and $9.50 inflation to, from 2013 to 2017 is $10.07, so the late fee pretty much keeps up with inflation, in case anyone home cared.
I'm so not surprised you did that.[676.01][676.01](laughter) Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda passes. All right. Next item on our agenda is item 10, which will include a public hearing on Wellhead Protection Plan Amendment, Part Two for the city of Coon Rapids system. Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have a brief PowerPoint for you prior to the public hearing. May answer some questions and just some general information. This is a statutory requirement for the city. This Part Two is a continuation of the overall wellhead protection plan. Part One was adopted back in March of 2016. That just kind of identifies the areas around our wells for protection of the aquifers. Part Two now is, now that those areas have been identified and how vulnerable they may be, what may exist within those areas, and what might we do to help protect them. So it's a requirement of the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act and Minnesota statutes. It's required to be updated every 10 years, and the last time was 2007. So Part One, just as a recap, there's some blobs on the map there, and they go around the city's 24 wells. Thirteen of those are primary wells, they go into the water treatment plants, and we supplement as needed primarily for summer usage with 11 seasonal wells. We're drawing water from three aquifers in the area, and the wellhead protection areas, which is the green within kind of the blue area, that's considered the wellhead protection area. It takes approximately 10 years for water that may land on the surface to find its way down into that aquifer. The wellhead protection area then becomes a drinking water supply management area, which encompasses all of that wellhead protection, but it goes to logical property boundaries. It doesn't cut through the middle of somebody's home, or it does cross boundaries, so part of our wellhead protection area is in adjacent cities, and so therefore, there's good communication that has to occur, so we don't have control over their zoning, so it would be nice that they understand that it might not be a good idea to put a gas station in one of our areas. So, most of our area was identified as moderately vulnerable, and that has to do with being in the Inoka sand plain. Infiltration is great, water can get down a lot quicker, so it's a little, while it's good for construction, it's not so good when it comes to protecting aquifers, but it is good for water quality. So Part Two Amendment really goes into the data elements that the agencies would like, Department of Health and the DNR, primarily they're looking at aquifer monitoring and testing, not only for the types of materials that are in the water, but also the level of those groundwater, are they changing over time? As you can imagine, we're just one entity, all drawing from similar aquifers as our neighbors, so it's good to consolidate all that information and understand really how things are working on a larger scale. We also look at potential contaminant sources that are contained within those drinking water supply areas. We know where those are, where are the gas stations, where are chemical suppliers, where are things that are occurring in this area that we maybe need to do some targeted education, or just an understanding of where those are. We have to update those quite frequently because they do change, and the only way to update them is to do requests through other agencies to make sure we have the current data. That goes into our GIS system, which is then used for a variety of zoning, emergency response, and the like. So let's go on to the next page. So this potential contaminant source inventory, there are 207 wells located within our supply management areas. Twenty-four of those are ours, the rest are irrigation sources, private wells, things of that nature. So we would do targeted mailings to those individuals, letting them understand they're within this area. If it's not currently being used, they should consider sealing it, here are some grant opportunities, just ways that they can best manage the wells in the areas that they are. Class V wells are more like the grease traps and floor drains and things that are associated with service stations, those, so we just want to make sure those are inspected regularly, they're handled appropriately. Fifty-four storage tanks, primarily gas stations, things of that nature, and then chemical storage properties, seven of which are ours. We've got Public Works, our water treatment plants, and then the natural gas pipelines that just run throughout the city. So our goals obviously are to improve and maintain the water quality, and also the supply that's out there. As you work with your neighbors, you certainly start to understand on a bigger scale what this is like, what are things that are, our new, White Bear Lake as an example, and lawsuits and things that do affect part of us as well, and so what are the things that are out there that we need to look for and be prepared for, and then also trying to identify educational materials and compiling the data that we need for everyone to function as a whole. Our management actions here, as our well management program, we do rehab on all of our equipment. During that time, we make sure all of our monitoring equipment is up to speed, working appropriately, we're getting the right data. During development review, making sure that if they're in these areas, that they handle things a little bit differently, infiltration may not be allowed. Developing targeted educational materials, as I said before, for specific concerns, as well as just general information, trying to let people understand what wellhead protection is and how it affects all of us. Maintaining that database of potential contaminant source, and that plays into land use planning and, again, data collection. So that is the end of my slideshow. The next steps is, we have the public hearing this evening, you take any comments that come about. The agency comment period has expired, we received a couple of minor comments, those are already in the draft as you see it, so if any more comes up tonight, then we have to respond to those comments, submit to the Department of Health, Met Council. Once they approve the document, it'll come back to you again for adoption. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have, otherwise I'd recommend you open the public hearing.
Is there any model of a multi-jurisdictional protection area for when our vulnerable area spills over into Blaine or Fridley or something? Is there anything, is there, is there any, already is there a procedure in place where we can exercise that to protect those, or?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's currently a group within Inoka County, all the county entities that have water supply do meet semi-regularly with the understanding that we all should be sharing similar data. While we might have a leak, it's going to be incumbent on them to best share with us their, if there's a gas spill and it's in Coon Rapids, I can run to our system and go, where do our storm pipes go, where might I go to try to stop that from getting to where, I don't have that same data that Blaine does. So then it just turns into state duty officers, Chief Piper and his folks to help out, and then just good communication. So there isn't a network because in addition to just understanding the concern areas, you have to understand all the infrastructure that exists within those, and it's very difficult to have that on a shared environment. I'm not saying it's impossible, but that's something we'll strive for.
All right. We have joint law enforcement, we have joint fire, we have all those other things, it seems like that would be unnatural. Councilmember Demmer?
Could you go back to the map for just a second?
With the blobs?
Yeah. My thought is if someone was at home and they saw that there was this red circle called Emergency Response Area, and this other red blotch called Aquifer Vulnerability High, could we just explain what that is and why they should or shouldn't panic?
Please, don't panic.
As I said, the wellhead protection area is that 10-year time of travel. The emergency recovery area is a one-year time, so it's just a much smaller area that you have a little bit higher expectations. An example of that is Inoka Hennepin School District built their maintenance facility up off of Dogwood, right next to one of our wells. They wanted to do infiltration on their site, but because they were in the emergency recovery area, that was prohibited. So if you recall, we worked with them through Reconstruction, Inoka County's project, and did some storm sewer work of which they paid for, but you're using more of that as a planning tool to say, these things aren't allowed in this area.
So it's not that there's an emergency that has happened, it's more that if there were one, this would be a place where, so we're preventing the emergencies from happening?
Correct.
Good.
And the vulnerability is based again upon really geology and soil conditions. It's a sandy material, is there a break between confining layers before, typically you've got a bedrock or clay, which is very impermeable and the water can't get through, but sometimes there are cracks or fissures or gaps that, just, it just happens that those are the prime areas where there isn't really a good confining layer, that water can get down much faster.
So the vulnerability isn't that it's running out of water either, it's that it could get polluted more easily, so we prevent people from doing high pollution things in that area, is that?
That is correct, Councilmember Demmer. This isn't vulnerability with regard to volume of water, this is vulnerability to protecting the water that's there, but also within this overall wellhead protection is constant monitoring of those aquifer levels that then we share, and you can look at on a larger scale as opposed to just Coon Rapids.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer before I open up the public hearing? Hearing none, all in, oh, in favor, what?
I'm in favor of opening the public hearing.
You're in favor of the public hearing, all right. Well, with that, we'll open the public hearing. If anybody is here to address council for the Wellhead Protection Plan Amendment, Part Two. Apparently you're not here for the Wellhead Amendment Plan, Part Two. Nobody here for that public hearing, so we will close the public hearing. And there's no action required on that other than have a public hearing.
That is correct. If anybody has any comments from the council, please let me know.
Otherwise, it will be forwarded as drafted.
All right. Very good. Well, then on to agenda item 11, which is another public hearing on liquor license fees and consider ordinances and resolutions setting the 2018 fees and charges. Mr. Stemwaddle, you want to, does somebody want to cover this, or do you want me to read the discussion first, or somebody want to do this, or?
Maybe I can just jump in here, Mayor, council.
Finance Manager Beer.
(laughter)
Put a collar for that.
This way.
It's my new name, no more D-Pockets, but, okay.
Spent it all on beer.
So what we're trying to do tonight is set the fees, but there is a public hearing required for the on-sale 3-2 malt liquor and the off-sale 3-2 malt liquor licenses, tavern license, and on-sale intoxicating liquor license. The other fees have been introduced previously for the ordinances, so this will be the second time that they are before you. That includes most of the miscellaneous fees, the building permit fees, and all the other fees that aren't required to be adopted by ordinance, and then the CTN studio fee. So basically tonight, what we need is a public hearing, and then we've got two ordinances and two resolutions that we're recommending adoption.
All right, thank you. Chief, I have a question, I'll bet this is your department. We have a, we're proposing a dangerous dog license fee of $35. Is, is that enough, and when do we need that? Because it just sounds like trouble.
Mr. Mayor, the answer is probably there won't be anybody that will make an application for that particular fee or to be designated dangerous dog, because once a dangerous dog designation happens, it's either, it has to meet a wide variety of restrictions, very severe restrictions, not least of which is homeowner's insurance has a problem with somebody who has a dog that's designated as dangerous, but we didn't want there to be no process at all, so it's unlikely that anybody would ever use this fee, but we didn't want there to not be one in the event that it did happen.
All right, thank you. Standing alone with no descrip, with no, no information, I thought, that's just weird. All right. Anybody have any questions or anything before we open the public hearing? All right, hearing that, hearing none. We're going to be opening a public hearing regarding the fee increases for on-sale 3-2 malt liquor and off-sale 3-2 malt liquor licenses, tavern license, and on-sale intoxicating liquor license. Is anybody here for the public hearing on the on-sale 3-2 malt liquor, off-sale 3-2 malt liquor, tavern license, and on-sale intoxicating liquor license? Nobody here for that? Yes, sir?
I don't have a question about the liquor license, but I have a question about that dog.
Okay, that's actually not part of the public hearing though, so can we address that one later?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody here to, for the public hearing on that, we'll close the public hearing. And, where is, council, what are your wishes on this?
All right, I'll give it a shot.
Councilmember Demmer.
I would move, do we do them all at once?
I'd prefer you do them separately, at least the two ordinances separately from the two resolutions.
Okay, I got the first one then. All right, I'd move to adopt ordinance 2198, revising certain license fees, service fees, and related charges effective January 1, 2018.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Grischowiak. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
It kind of goes to my comments from last meeting. Yeah, and so people understand what we're doing, the increases are basically a cost of living adjustment, so it costs us more to do the processing and handling, and so the fees kind of move up on that scale. I like to look for more efficiencies and different things, and so we do review on a 10-year cycle, kind of step back, look at what our fees are, how do they relate to other cities, where can we be more efficient, and then level set again, and then we would continue on. So our next, I think it's 2019 is when we're in the next cycle, just so people understand, it's not just, that we do take that step back on a regular basis and look at how, are these fees set, are they reasonable, do they align with our neighbors, to make sure that what we're doing is, makes sense, so.
All right. Any other discussion? Councilmember Grischowiak?
The only question that I had, or clarification maybe, would be for Mr. Hammer on the fees for the water meters that are in here. Do those fees that we charge cover the cost of the water meter and then the cost of the replacements? Because in the past, we've had those meters failing. Is that where that increase is coming from?
Yes, Councilmember Grischowiak, I believe it's in the memo where there's a, roughly a 30% admin fee, so as these fail, it helps cover the cost of the next one. I mean, we're still under warranty on some of these, so that helps as well, but city owns those meters forever, so if they're failing over time, there is a cost that is recouped through this to help offset.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that ordinance number 2198 is adopted. Somebody want to, Councilmember Kicker?
I move that we adopt ordinance 2199, establishing permit and inspection fees for Building Inspections Division as authorized by the Minnesota statute, section 16B dot 62 subdivision one, effective January 1, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Wells. Discussion? Hearing none?
Nope. So, this is the one that I have more issues with, because the, while we're doing that cost of living adjustment with a lot of our fees, it's also based on the valuation, and inflation already increases the valuations, and so to me, that's a little bit of a double hit, so I'm not as comfortable with this one, and I'd like to, you know... hit, so I'm not as comfortable with this one, and I'd like to, you know, I think, in generally, we probably have to do it, but I think we need to revisit the model of how we do the fees that are tied to a valuation versus a straight action, kind of a fee that's a task, because if I'm raising my fee on inflation as well as the valuation, I think that's a double hit, and I'm not in favor of that.
No, that makes sense. Councilmember Demmer?
Second. Suggestion for a workshop?
Yeah, I think it's something that we have to look at, because obviously, these things come to us on an annual basis, and I don't know if it's time for us to fix it for this year, but it, I think we have to look at that model.
Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor, Council, that could be something that would be included in the overall fee study, and we can look at some of the billing inspection fees and see if, you know, if our method is dissimilar or in line with where we want it to be, so I think that's something we can include into that overall scope of our fee study for, which will start in 2018, but will be for the 2019 fees.
All right. Any other discussion on ordinance 2199? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, one opposed, Councilmember Geisler. Now, we're looking at, we've got a couple of resolutions. Mr. Brody, do you want these together, or do you want these separate also?
Separate, in case there's some discussion.
All right. Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt resolution 17-112 establishing certain fees and charges effective January 1st, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker?
Correct.
Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
So, I'm reading everything right, this is the one with the dog license fee, so I did just have an additional question. So, you said no one will apply for it, but who should apply for it? It's not by breed of dog, or is it just by history of dog?
No, yeah, Minnesota statute forbids discrimination based on the breed of a dog. A dangerous dog is a legal designation based on what the dog had done, behavior, either inflicts substantial bodily harm on a human or has had more than one bite of a human. There's sort of a two-step process of the first dog bite, a dog would be potentially designated, or designated as a potentially dangerous dog, a repeat offense would be a dangerous dog. If a dog is designated as dangerous based on its behavior, city ordinance puts a list of restrictions on ownership of a dog that's designated as danger, dangerous, not least of which, secure enclosure at all times, when outside the enclosure on a short leash, muzzled, and the big restriction is a surety bond, meaning the dog has to carry specific insurance if you're going to own one, and frankly, I've never heard of anybody even pursuing that avenue with an insurance company, so it's just never, it hasn't come up where somebody wanted to keep a dangerous dog in Coon Rapids. In my experience, it hasn't happened. Might have happened historically, but to go back to the fee, actually, I was just looking at it quick, the current city ordinance says a fee shall be designated from time to time, and that had been an oversight. That needed to be corrected.
So, this will probably lay there on that list with conversation parlor, these unused licenses?
I think so, yes, sir.
Any other discussion? We had a motion and second on resolution 17-112, right? Yes, Councilmember Demmer, okay. Any other discussion?
Just a clarification, a question from Mr. Hammer actually pertain to this, to this one.
But you got your answer?
I did.
All right. Same answer applies, all right.
And, Mr. Mayor, my same comments apply, so I will save you the comments.
Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, and one more resolution there. Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt resolution 17-113 establishing certain fees and charges for use of CTN studio facilities effective January 1st, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Turned off the meeting if we said no.
CTN would have quit covering it right there. All right. So, we do, we have one more public hearing. Public hearing in consideration of resolution 17-110 rescinding a lot split approval for parent custom homes, planning case 17-1. Mr. Harlicker, anything you want to cover on this one?
Yeah, I can give the council and yourself a little background information. Back in April of this year, council approved a lot split for property at 10334 Mississippi Boulevard, splitting a large lot into two. Since that approval, the applicant found a buyer of the property who wanted to buy the whole thing and not split the property. That's the reason for rescinding the lot split.
Okay, so basically, their non-action will rescind the lot split, then?
Right. Since the council formally adopted a resolution approving the lot split, we need to formally adopt a resolution rescinding it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Harlicker before we open the public hearing? Hearing none, then we will open the public hearing. This is on, if anybody wants to address counsel on planning case 17-1 rescinding the lot split on Mississippi Boulevard, 10334 Mississippi Boulevard. Anybody here to address public hearing on rescinding the lot split? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 17-110 rescinding lot split approval for planning case 17-1 parent custom homes.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. No bid openings, old business under new business. We're looking at, consider an agreement with Canexus Energy for EV flight, fleet analysis. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city was approached by Canexus Energy to conduct a pilot study. They felt we were a larger city within their service area, so they'd like to take a, different types of fleet vehicles that we own, put a little chip, if you will, in there, monitor idle time, runtimes, gas consumption, mileage, all of that sort of stuff, and then give us a report in the end. So, they would be in our vehicles for roughly six, seven months, there's some fire vehicles, some police vehicles, inspections, assessing, certainly not the larger type vehicles, but most of the fleet, and so we will do this with no obligation to us, there's no cost for us, just a little bit of time for our mechanics to put them in. If they're damaged, those would be our responsibility to pay for, I think they're about $300 apiece, and after the period of time, they would provide a report to us, which shows all of the different usage by vehicles, and then they say, "If you wanted to replace this one with, you know, select one of these," we'll tell you what the average cost or the life expectancy for those would be, then we can just use that information as we go into the future to determine whether hybrids and/or electric vehicles might be of some use within the city's fleet. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Staff time to install the devices, do they just plug into the computer port down there?
Yeah, there's a port jack that they just plug directly into.
Okay. And then, they're $300 if they're damaged? How would they be damaged, if somebody pulled it out or something?
There was an accident, or, you know, somebody bumped it when they were operating some other piece of equipment, and I think the police used theirs for radar, so we wouldn't be putting them into those ports, and that's why those vehicles really aren't part of this, but...
We're probably not going to send our police out in little vaults, anyway.
It'd be fun watching a chase.
Okay, well, Council, do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Canexus Energy to perform a fleet vehicle analysis that investigates the potential for future electronic, or electronic, electric hybrid vehicle conversions.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grischowiak, and then Demmer.
I just think this is a good idea, especially if the Canexus is providing the service force for free, as we're always turning over these vehicles and everything, we'll get a snapshot ahead and see if we can maybe save by moving into some electric vehicles where we can't. The other question is, the unit probably plugs into that little USB port or OSB port underneath there, it's going to be by their knee, probably, maybe just educate those folks not to bump those things, damage them, and bite the piece.
Unfortunately, we can't say that's going to come out of your jack.
I'm in favor.
Okay, Councilmember Demmer?
Yeah, I agree with that, I think it's good that this is information you kind of want to know, anyway. I did have one kind of weird question that I thought maybe might go towards legal. I don't know what these track, is there any possibility that they could track something that would cause us to be liable for something a city employee did that they shouldn't have? Not that they should be doing things they shouldn't, anyway, and we probably should be liable if they do things they shouldn't, but, you know, I just wanted to know, I mean, or are employees going to see an invasion of privacy and unplug them? Is there any downside legally that we should be concerned about?
I'm going to let Tim answer it initially, because we did have this discussion.
Okay. This was something that was brought, you know, is it Big Brother, are we spying, are we doing other things? Everybody that will have one, it's not a secret, they will know, I talked to both chiefs, everybody to say, "What are good candidates for these?" People will understand what they're there for. You could program them to collect a whole lot of data, but I think we're really looking at four or five specific parameters, and that's the only data that's being collected.
Okay, good.
It's not like the tractors running around town with the coffee can over the top of the GPS unit on the cab.
Does it become public data, then? Do we store it somewhere that is accessible to the public, that they can look it up?
It's not, we won't be having the data...
Oh, it's right, it's Canexus's data, yeah, okay.
The report that we get from them presumably will be...
Bummer, that would have been fun to look at.
Well, you can look at the report, Canexus is going to provide it, so. Any other discussion?
His idea of fun and mine are so different.
I could try that, Russell, is there a lot?
All right, hearing no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, on to item 14, consider resolution 17-111 establishing the 2018 fees and charges for use of city park facilities. All fees and charges for the use of city park facilities will remain the same as, remain at the same rates as 2017. The only change on this resolution is the addition of Woodview, Riverview, and Moore Parks to the picnic shelter fees. These parks have recently been renovated, and use of the picnic shelters will now be promoted. Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution 17-111 establishing certain fees and charges for the use of city park facilities effective January 1st, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider resolution 17-109 approving the preliminary and final plat, Stendell second edition 2060 125th Lane, Terry Stendell, planning case 17-30. Mr. Harlicker?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, we do have a short point here.
Back to the blobs, Wade.
What the applicant is proposing to do is to plat this parcel here, Stendell property into two lots, this is Shenandoah Boulevard, Main Street, Ashley Oaks Townhouse Development here, and it's a 3.8 acre parcel right here. What's being proposed is to split this lot in two, 125th splits the property at this point, so they're splitting the north half into one lot, south half into another lot. The north half is zoned low-density residential, LDR2, this piece down here is zoned moderate density residential. Surrounding zonings, this parcel here is also moderate density residential, this is LDR2, this is a planned unit development. Here's the preliminary plat that's being proposed. This parcel here on the north side of the street is 2.54 acres, as you can see, it rises up to a hill here and then drops off sharply to the north, there's a wetland on the north end of the property. You've got the street here, this area here will be platted as public right-of-way, it's currently in easement, and then you've got this parcel here, which is about 0.75 acres, which includes the initial residence and detached garage. The lots comply with the dimensional requirements of the zoning code and park dedication. When these lots were created, there was no park dedication required at that time, so one of the conditions of the approval is park dedication be paid for the property on the north, because it's single-family residential. The property of the south, since it's moderate density residential, and we don't know how many units will be on there, park dedication for that lot will be deferred until the time that property is developed, and will be collected at the time of development. Planning commission meeting on October 19th, two residents spoke at the public hearing, they were concerned about future development on these two parcels. Any development other than single-family residence here would come in with just a typical building permit. If they were to come in and try to subdivide this property maybe into two, that would require going through the planning process and public hearing notices would go out. Same with property of the south, redevelopment of this would trigger planning commission review and possibly council review with public hearings. Planning commission recommended approval unanimously, and recommended approval of resolution 17-109 with the conditions regarding park dedication, $2,000 for lot one, and park dedication for lot two be deferred until the time of development, and applicable fees would be what the fees are at that time, compliance with Title 11, and all engineering comments be addressed.
Mr. Harlicker, according to the discussion you wrote out, the house has been vacant long enough that it has lost its conditional use permit and can't be occupied anymore as a single-family home, then, is that the...
Mayor and council, it was not, when this was initially developed, it was a single-family residence. Once this property was changed to moderate density residential, the house became a non-conforming use. Since it's been vacant for more than a year, it lost that non-conforming status, and therefore, any future use of this property has to be compliant with the MDR regulations and uses. Single-family residences are not in allowed use in the moderate-density residential district.
So, the house will remain there until they choose to do something with it, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Grischowiak?
Do you have to say that that house cannot be inhabited as a single-family residence? I mean, it has to be demolished, it's...
Councilmember, yes, it can't be reoccupied as a single-family residence.
Okay.
That doesn't happen very often, I don't think, does it?
Yeah, it does not.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
For planning case 17-30, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat in resolution 17-109 approving the final plat for Stendell second edition with the three stated conditions.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
It's a lot that's zoned wrong for its current use, and it's got a road down the middle of it, so it seems like a pretty good time to split it.
There was, there was a Realtor that has worked on that property for, how long did Laurie work on that, 20 years, trying to figure out a different way to divide it up, and just, it's never worked out.
Mayor, I know we've seen this area, when I was on planning commission, many times, with a lot of different opportunities and things, and this makes sense.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We're on to item 16, to consider resolutions 16-310B and... We're on to item sixteen, to consider Resolutions sixteen dash three-ten-B and sixteen dash three-twelve-B, assessment of costs for public improvements, Lawrence Estates. Mark Hanson isn't here. Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this was a plat that was established in two thousand fourteen. Due to the road conditions, it was slated for reconstruction. Nothing had commenced on these lots, so we worked a development agreement with the Lawrences, just stating, while we're in here, it might make sense for us to install your services. That way, you don't have to do them one at a time and keep tearing into this road. They had agreed, so we initiated a development agreement previously, and following completion and finalization of that contract, these are the actual costs plus eight percent engineering fee for us to do the work for them. And so there's an assessment role here, and the cost would be split equally across the ten lots that were previously platted. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Council? Councilmember Griscoviac?
When will the assessments be due and payable?
They would go on the tax roll, starting in two thousand eighteen, and they're payable over five years, I believe.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt Resolution number sixteen dash three-sub-ten-B, declaring the cost to be assessed, and Resolution number sixteen dash three-sub-twelve-B, adopting the assessment.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Griscoviac. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are on to item seventeen this evening. Consider Resolution seventeen dash one-one-five, authorizing Drake MDG Limited Partnership Housing Revenue Note. Ms. Legg, is there, oh, another public hearing. Do you wanna cover anything first?
We need to hold today a public hearing for this issue. What's happening here is the Drake Limited Partnership has applied for housing tax credits, and they have received an allocation. So along with that, they will be issuing like housing revenue bonds. But because there's a short time period when they have to get these issued, they're gonna issue a temporary note in the terms of about five million dollars. The city is not obligated for this. It will be their note, but they will have to come back when they issue permanent financing. So there's a public hearing on that, and then a resolution adopting that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Legg before we open the public hearing? All right. With that, we will open the public hearing. This is on the issuance, sale, and delivery of a multi-family housing revenue note for Drake MDG Limited Partnership. Is anybody here for the public hearing on the Drake MDG Limited Partnership Housing Revenue Note? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Limited to council.
Your honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution seventeen dash one-one-five, which authorizes the issuance, sale, and delivery of the multi-family housing revenue note, and authorizes loaning the proceeds of the note to Drake MDG Limited Partnership.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item eighteen. Consider Amendment number two to the memorandum of understanding for the CDBG program. Mr. Stemmell or Mr. Frenilius?
I can cover this item. As councilors are aware, we discussed this earlier in the work session. This item in particular relates to the recapture of community development block grant funds, which the city has been using for a number of years for our housing rehab program. This year, we were unable to utilize all of those funds, and so there's a sense of urgency that those dollars be spent by the end of January of next year, two thousand eighteen. So one of the options that seems to be most viable is to work with the county to recapture those dollars and then reallocate them for some other projects, one of which is the Pine Point Apartments here in Coon Rapids. So while we can't use the dollars for the original purpose, which was single-family rehab, this would allow us to use most of those dollars for a project here in Coon Rapids, so we'll see a benefit to our community. The total amount of funds includes about eighty-five thousand dollars of program, or excuse me, of actual program dollars, and then there's one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of program income. So it's a total of up to two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars that would be affected by this particular action tonight. As we discussed in the work session, the importance of spending these dollars is that if we don't, both the city and the county are penalized in future funding years. So really, this is the best option to preserve our ability to utilize these dollars going forward. So we would recommend that the council adopt the amendment to the memorandum of understanding related to the CDBG program.
Council, any questions of Mr. Frenilius or anybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I'll make a motion to enter into the amended memorandum, MOU, and as well as any other necessary documents with the county of no, NOKA, for the purpose of recapturing the remaining, is that PY year, planning year, two thousand sixteen funds, including program income and reallocating those funds for multi-family and single-family home rehabilitation projects as defined in our Exhibit A.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Wells. Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
So we had a work session on this, just so people understand. This is basically a use-it-or-lose-it situation. If we don't lose it, we, if we don't use it, we actually lose it for two years, and it reduces our ability to make these changes in a future year. So, you know, here we, here we get a chance to rehab an apartment and then keep our ability to rehab some houses next year. So it's sort of a better do-it-or-else kinda situation.
I was anticipating you were gonna say win-win.
Yes.
Councilmember Geisler?
I'd like to thank the county and for the ability to do this MOU, to be able to work in partnership and being able to make sure that everybody can benefit. So, you know, I think that's a good thing. I appreciate it.
Anytime we can get some of our housing stock reconditioned, and this'll be nice. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And now, let's see, we're at the open-mic portion of the evening. Anybody here for open-mic? All right, hang on then. Oh, and they, your, your dog license question, the chief will, if you have any, answer that after the council meeting. All right. Open-mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open-mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open-mic is not a time for problem-solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only. Questions from council will be for clarification only, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forwarded to the speaker. So if you could come up to the podium and... Anybody here for open-mic? Yes, sir. Your time is up already? Usually, that's, that's me saying that.
Hello, my name is Vernon Crane. Address is sixteen ninety-four, one hundred nineteenth Avenue, Coon Rapids, Minnesota, five-five-four-four-eight. I am here tonight to speak to you about the proposed, proposed improvements to Coon Creek Park or Lions Creek Park. What I'm here to talk about primarily is the parking lot that we have in the park. So I have spoken to many members within the city government over the last, well, since Halloween night is when I found out about this. And I have come to find multiple things out about the park and the parking lot. And one of the things that I have found is that I was told to go online and to give my comments through, I believe it is called a survey. So upon finding this out on Friday, I was told that absolutely of the eighty-four thousand, I think, residents of Coon Rapids, zero had gone online and filled out this survey. Absolutely zero. Now, through the history of Coon Rapids, primarily back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, a company called Decision Resources has been brought, brought on by Coon Rapids to do a lot of the planning through these surveys, and have made it clear to Coon Rapids that they can really tell exactly how the, how well these surveys are going to work in telling the council exactly how this, things are gonna be received. And I find it really odd that zero of eighty-four thousand went on as of Friday of all year long, or however long this was out, and did not take the survey. So I logged in, and I did the survey. And immediately after, or while taking the survey, I contacted my wife. Now, I was at our cabin, and I did this from Chisago County. I contacted my wife here in Coon Rapids to do the same thing. She used the exact same web address that I used, and the web address took her to a completely different site, not showing the link to do the survey. Now, knowing, I work in IT, and I do happen to know that you do get metadata, and your location is one of these pieces of metadata that is tracked within a web address, so it knows exactly where you are. I'm assuming that because I was out of the area, it took it from me. Whenever I copied my link and sent it to her, immediately it worked. But this was only through me sending a link that I had already got the metadata from Chisago County that was she able to get into it. Now, I have had other city employees contact me since Friday, and again, told me, "Go online and take the survey." And again, they told me, "Don't," or nobody has taken the survey up until now. I've already out of three minutes.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry.
Wrap it up here.
So I would, I would really ask that we look at, did we really get a true survey out there for everyone to know about, and did the citizens really talk about their survey? And then the other thing I would really like, I thought I had five minutes, so I apologize, that I found in this research that I have done, in two thousand thirteen, there was an amendment that was passed by the city of Coon Rapids, or the residents of Coon Rapids, for seventeen-point-four million dollars to pay for these parks. Now, in this amendment, or this bond that was passed, there were three cornerstone parks, plus, as the city council had requested, three or four neighborhood parks. That was estimated to be sixteen to eighteen million dollars to renovate and complete. In the, in the renovations that we are doing now, we have five cornerstone parks and three or four smaller parks. Then, looking at the two thousand twelve planning document of October two thousand twelve, Lions Creek Park was deemed to have been a very highly well-designed, and I've got it logged, written down here, cohesive park design, as it were. Now, we're looking to change where the parking lot is. So this tells me that it is actually above and beyond what the original dollar amount is. I'm very concerned about how we're gonna pay for this new parking lot, beyond what this parking lot will do to the park as it is. Now, I've given, I've been given multiple reasons of why we're doing it. I would like to look at this further and have more discussion about this. And I apologize for taking up more time than allotted, but the biggest concern here is the finances and taxes to pay for this. Only seventeen-point-four million dollars was approved by the residents, and it sounds like there's gonna be more money spent than's been approved.
Okay. So you'll get a, you'll get a letter from staff addressing the surveys, because there's two different surveys, the Decision Resource, and then I assume this is just an online?
It's a Survey Monkey tool.
Survey Monkey tool, yeah. Yeah, so you'll, you'll, that'll be addressed in the letter. And if it doesn't respond or doesn't answer your question, please come back at the next open-mic, and hopefully we won't keep you quite so late.
It's quite all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else here for open-mic? Yes, ma'am.
I don't do very good at these things. So Ronnie Crane, sixteen ninety-four, one hundred nineteenth Avenue Northwest. I live right behind Lions Park, and I have a major concern about that parking lot being right behind my house. We've had a lot of cop cars flying down Hanson back and forth. People getting roughed out of that parking lot all the time that we already have. I don't want that behind my house. We have small children in our six houses that we have across here. So I just don't want all those lights and coming into my house and all this stuff. So I missed the meeting, so I just didn't get to address my opinions. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here for open-mic this evening? Open-mic, yeah. Was that the right one? Yeah. All right. Nobody else here for open-mic? We'll close, close that portion of the meeting. And we don't have any reports on previous open-mics. We are on to other business? Let's go to the last page. Yes, we are. Other business. Council? Staff? Mr. Stemmell?
Mayor, council, just a couple of things. First, I'd like to just recognize a couple of exemplary efforts by employees in recent months. Today, several of us had the pleasure of joining Fire Chief John Piper as he accepted the Transportation Alliance, Transportation Advocate Award today in St. Cloud for his efforts on helping us secure funding for the Hanson Grade Separation this last legislative session. So I thought that was fantastic. And then we'll chief-to-chief, Chief Brad Wise, who was a member of the Fit for the Future Task Force, and put in a lot of time and effort into that process the last couple of years. Obviously, they were very successful last night with their bond question in the election, and so just wanted to thank them publicly for those above-and-beyond efforts.
Yeah, that wasn't even close.
And then finally, just a point to note that City Hall is closed on Friday, as is the recycling center in observance of Veterans Day, which takes place Saturday. And so the preceding day is, or mandatory to be closed per our policy.
Excellent. So, Mr. Hammer, could we get an update on those streetlights? I'm not seeing any action on Main Street or Coon Rapids Boulevard yet.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the streetlights have been delivered. We're owners of them. We've had them for about four days now. We're just awaiting getting county permits to work within their right-of-way to have these installed. It's still my desire and hope and belief that we can get Main Street completed before we get into Thanksgiving. Coon Rapids Boulevard may lag a little bit behind. I'm focused primarily right now on trying to get Main Street done, as that's probably gonna have a larger impact. But both of them will be completed by the end of the year. I just need to get permits. Contracts are in place. Materials are here.
Well, that's gonna be a nice upgrade. I was driving down Coon Rapids Boulevard last night about ten-thirty, and it's just so dark down there, one of the three lights working, and, you know. Yeah, and, yeah, and Main Street's needed those lights for, ever since they put those first lights in, that didn't light. Other business? Nothing? Really? Blue Ox, they're like, like thirteen and one and one or something? They're, yeah. All right, well, look for a motion to adjourn then, I guess.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.